All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our first order of business tonight, I'm going to ask Councilman Hurley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight we do have a couple wonderful presentations we're going to make, but before we do that, I'm just going to ask Councilwoman Moranti has a quick motion.
Okay, a motion to appoint Morris Borea as the town attorney and authorize the town manager to enter into a letter of agreement for services. Second.
And if we could just for, just so we're following proper procedure, could we just have a motion to move that item up to this point on the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so now, why don't you, if you don't mind, just rereading the motion?
Okay, yeah, no, I have it right there. Okay, a motion to appoint Morris Borea as the town attorney and authorize the town manager to enter into a letter of agreement for services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Town Attorney, thank you very much for being here. Yeah, that's the hottest seat we have in the room, so yes, you'll sit there. Welcome. Very good. So now we get to the fun part of the meeting, we have the couple presentations, I'm going to ask, once again, Councilman Hurley is going to step down, and if we could have the Scoops for Troops, and he will be assisted by Councilwoman Christopher. Meet over here at the podium, please, and we got to make sure we can get you on camera and get pictures and all that, so.
Okay. I'd just like to point out one thing before I begin this proclamation. These two youngsters are phenomenal, but their parents, who are sitting over here and up there, are phenomenal for the support that they have been giving these youngsters in their endeavors to help veterans. Now, I'd like to read this proclamation, Scoops for Troops, Michael Ahern and family. Whereas in 2017, while attending a Fourth of July parade, eight-year-old Michael Ahern and 11-year-old Kara Ahern spotted a wounded soldier and wanted to say "thank you." And whereas, they learned the recovering soldier was a participant at the Travis Mills Foundation, a retreat center in Maine. And whereas, through that chance meeting, Michael developed an awareness of military service and obstacles faced by recovering soldiers and their families. And whereas, the Travis Mills Foundation, founded by injured Staff Sergeant Travis Mills, has a mission to support post-9/11 veterans who have been critically injured by providing them and their families opportunities for recovery, relaxation, and growth. And whereas, at age nine, Michael, with the support and assistance of his family, founded the Scoops for Troops organization, embarking on a journey of fundraising centered around ice cream to send wounded veterans and their families to Travis Mills Foundation retreat. And whereas, Michael and his sister Kara worked together on the foundation's many projects and events. And whereas, what started out as wanting to provide ice cream as a thank you to the kids of the wounded soldiers for having hero parents, has blossomed into a continuum of assistance to recovering soldiers and their families on their healing journey. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Town Council of the Town of Plainville, proudly acknowledge our Plainville community, family, and the important and impactful efforts of Michael, Kara, and parents in their support of healing veterans and their families. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 12th day of November 2023, the Plainville Town Council, Christopher Zorko, Chairman, Rosemary Moranti, Vice Chairwoman, Quinn Christopher, Benjamin Getteman, Daniel Hurley, Deborah Tompkins, and David Underwood. And we want to thank you. And I'd like to mention one more thing. These youngsters have raised over $100,000 already, and they have a goal, a personal goal, of $500,000 total before they go off to college, so they only a couple more years, but they're just go-getters, and we really thank you.
Councilwoman Christopher's got some pins for you.
Thank you.
We thank you. I want a couple for you.
Do either of you want to say anything? And it's okay if you don't. You're welcome. All right, thank you. As we move on to our second presentation, now, this is going to take some coordination on your part to fit all of the under-14 soccer team, you're going to have to try and do your best to make a line, and so you're all in, you know, we got to get you all on camera, and you know, obviously you want to be on TV, so I'll ask Councilman Getteman, again assisted by Councilwoman Christopher, if you guys could all meet at the podium.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, first. Yeah, that's all right, no, that's, that's fine.
All right. So those of you that don't know, this is the Plainville U-14 Boys Travel Soccer Team who won states. Whereas, the Plainville United U-14 Boys Travel Soccer Team is made up of 18 boys from 7th and 8th grades in the middle school of Plainville, Bristol, and New Britain. And whereas, this is the first time in many years, the Plainville United U-14 Boys Travel Soccer Team has played in the CJSA Connecticut Soccer Cup Finals by finishing with an impressive season-ending games. Winning against an undefeated Bethel, 2-0, Plainville officially became the U-14 state champions and have been invited to West Virginia in June to represent Connecticut to participate in the 2024 Regional Presidents' Cup. And whereas, the Plainville United U-14 Boys Travel Soccer Team members, Aiden Wartonic, Ben Roberts, Carson Clifford, Christian Rodriguez, Cody Carrier, Devin Petrow, Dylan Gimble, Evan Chamberlain, Juan Gonzalez, Mason Harland, Mason Parsons, Matthew Fantasi, Michael Wotak, Nick Serrano, Peter Montana, Ryan Gridley, Ryan Patillo, Landon Contour, earned the championship by demonstrating teamwork, sportsmanship, and athleticism. And now, therefore be it resolved, that we, the Town Council of the Plainville, Town of Plainville, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby extend to all members of the Plainville U-14 Boys Travel Soccer Team and to their dedicated coaches, Julie Gianno, Jason Gianno, and Bruce Billowen, our sincere congratulations on a job well done and our best wishes for continued success in the future. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 20th day of November 2023, Plainville Town Council, Christopher Zorko, Chairman, Rosemary Moranti, Vice Chairwoman, Quinn Christopher, Benjamin Getteman, Daniel Hurley, Deborah Tompkins, and Dave Underwood. Congratulations, guys, nice job.
Now, before you guys break up, you're going to have to turn around and let your parents take pictures of you, so don't get your pin and take off right away, try and stay...
Stay right here in terms.
Is that, Andy, is that for both or just the soccer? All right, and as the pins are getting handed out and we're getting organized for pictures, if anyone wants to take a copy of the proclamation with them, we're going to have some copies up on the front table there for anyone on the team that would like one. Yeah, and hold it for a few more seconds. I saw someone run out the back, wait, we got one more picture coming. No, that's all right. That's what happens when you win, you get a lot of pictures taken of yourself. Get used to it. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Everybody's good with pictures? Congratulations to Scoops for Troops Soccer, congratulations again. Now, I know most of you, most of you probably don't have anything better to do, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, so we'll just pause for a minute or two, and if you do feel the need that you need to go home, we'll let you do that. All right, so thank you, everyone, for your patience, I think we'll continue with the rest of the agenda. We don't have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we can move to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 26, 2023 special meeting, the October 16, 2023 regular meeting, the October 23, 2023 special meeting, and the November 13, 2023 organizational meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions, any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries, we'll move on to item number four, announcements and reports. Is there anyone that has an announcement or a report?
Chairman Zorko?
Yes.
Yes, I have a report on two groups to which I'm the liaison, Library Board of Trustees, I did attend their meeting last week. The primary agenda item was a review of their various investments. As you know, there are several funds that support the library as well as town funds. Also a report on the strategic long-term planning process which has begun. And in terms of the agreement for the transfer of the Trumbull bird tags to the Peabody Museum, Yale's Peabody Museum, that is still under review. The Housing Authority did not meet this month, but at the last regular meeting in October, there was a question from a council member about exactly how the waiting list works for the Housing Authority, so in a nutshell, I can summarize that information. Typically, there's over 100 persons that are on the waiting list for our senior housing. It's, the waiting list is opened every few years. The names that come in for each opening period are submitted to a lottery, and there was a lottery, and then those, everybody is assigned a number, and when a vacancy occurs, it is offered to the person who has the next number. And when apartment becomes vacant, of course, there is a span of time during which it remains vacant for cleaning, for maintenance, and before somebody actually moves in. So that is why sometimes there are four or five vacancies at the senior housing at one time. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else with a, an announcement or a report?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to mention that the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce are having their holiday party where they recognize small business and emerging leaders, and that's going to be held on Wednesday, December 13, from 5:00 to 8:00, at the Doubletree in Bristol, and I'm happy to say that Crooked Soul Tattoo will be the business being recognized for Plainville this year. And also, on the same night, Wednesday, December 13, our Santa Parade that we've had in town for the past three years will also be happening at Norton Park, starting at 6:00 PM. More details to follow.
All right, thank you, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to inform the council that I have personally talked with Dave Underwood, and he has successfully come through his heart surgery this past week, and he is resting at home.
Very good, thank you. All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's, just wanted to announce that on December 13, will be the Wave to Santa Parade going through Norton Park. There's a small group of us that put this together every year, it was originally the brainchild of Linda Coveney, during COVID, when kids couldn't go sit on Santa's lap, we put together a small parade going through Norton Park, and we've continued it every year, so that'll be December 13 at 6:00 PM.
All right, anyone else? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to point out that on November 28, at the Senior Center, all veterans over 60 years old could attend what we call the Social Coffee Hour for Vets, and it's open to anyone, you don't have to be a member of the Senior Center, it's all vets over 60. And a lot of great information is exchanged there on November 28, 10 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, we will move on now to item number five, appointments and resignations. We've taken care of item number one, Councilwoman Tompkins.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Tom Wackrowski of 154 White Oak Avenue as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion? Anyone want a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, item number three. Anyone care to make the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept the recognition of Quinn Christopher from the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and item B.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make, make a motion to accept the resignation of Benjamin Getteman from the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, any comments or questions on that part? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Getteman.
I would like to make a, make a motion to appoint Joseph Catanzaro to Hollis Lane to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? I just, terms.
Yeah, I know, I noticed that with the P and Z as well.
Is, I know the vacancies to 2025, was it November of 2025?
One, there are two of the park on record 2025, and one is 2026.
Oh, and that's all right. Yeah, as long as we make a notation that, you know, if we're making three appointments tonight that were, take it, yeah, it's, don't rush, it's... All right, so that's noted that that will be May 1, 2025, the term will end. Sure, or you could just tell me when we get there, if you want. All right, so any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item B.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ray Carroll, 24 Crown Street, to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Motion and a second.
For a term ending May 1, 2024.
Okay, May 1, 2024. All right, any other comments, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and finally, item C.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kathy Paglisi, 50 West Broad Street, to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and the term will be?
For a term ending date, May 1, 2025.
All right. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion carries as well, item number five, under appointments.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to accept the retirement of regular firefighter Joseph Salvario from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? I think I'd just like to acknowledge, Joe, I think, is it 43 years of service? I know it's been a long time, but I think 43 years of service, so I just want to special, acknowledge, you know, that's, again, the amount of years that we get from our volunteers, especially on the fire company, it's, you know, they're good people, so, any other comments, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Are there any, any other appointments or resignations this evening? All right, we can move on to item number six, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chairwoman, but do you have anything to report this evening? Hit the button, is it on?
Oh, yeah, there it goes. Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street, this thing has gotten a little fancy since I was...
Be careful.
So I did just have a very brief couple of words, I wanted to, first of all, congratulate everyone on their election to the council, and it's good to be here this evening. I wanted to also make you aware that on the 28th, and I think that's Wednesday, we are having a community open session to greet our new superintendent, Mr. Reese.
Oh, that's right.
Who's here with us this evening, and I believe that's at the high school, and I think it's 5:30 to 7:30, so I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. Also wanted to just thank you for coordinating, I know what we should expect to be another meeting with the council where we will discuss the middle school project on the 29th, also at the high school, I believe. So it'll be a busy week, and I think that's it, unless you have any questions of me?
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, congratulations as well. And again, I know, we'll move on to item number seven, I know you've only been here for 29 minutes, Town Attorney, but I don't expect you to have a report, but if you want to say a few words, please feel free.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, thank you very much for appointing me this evening, I'm looking forward to representing Plainville. I really enjoyed the presentations to start, I haven't been to a town council meeting in a little bit of time now, I represented Rocky Hill and South Windsor, but usually we only attend by invitation, it feels good to be needed. But I did enjoy it, the soccer and the other one, and the nonprofit stuff is something that I'm very much involved in in my own personal life, as I think we talked about.
Yes.
I've been a town attorney for, like I said, Rocky Hill and South Windsor, and I've been practicing in this area for a very long time, I live in Weathersfield, and I look forward to doing this, I think that this is a very nice town from what I've seen so far, I really appreciate you guys having confidence in me, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, all right. Unless there's a comment or a question, we'll move on to item number eight, report of the town manager.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome Morris and certainly help you in any way that I can in terms of the transition, so my office is always open, and I'm sure we'll be...
I didn't meet with you this week, and I was like, okay, but I like, said the truth.
Yep, absolutely, we understand. So my first item is the middle school renovation as new project update, and as the Chairwoman, Becky, had just indicated, the first order of business will be a joint Town Council, Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, November 29, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Learning Center Commons in Plainville High School, to review the following information. Updated cost estimates for the renovate like new project as presented at the 9/26/23 joint meeting, the anticipated design and construction timeline, and also impact to debt service as presented at the 10/23 Town Council meeting, next steps to submit application for the June 30, 2024 deadline, and the proposed referendum timeline, those are some of the things that we'll be reviewing, among other things, and questions that may come up in that process as we deliberate and discuss the items that we need to do. The town manager's office, we have uploaded documents to the website, the dashboard, like the revised construction cost estimates, project timeline, important dates, and other related documents. And the Town Council, December meeting dates of December 4 and December 18, will address action items in order to establish the public hearings, the P and Z Planning and Zoning Commission 824 referral, and of course, the referendum date. So there'll be ongoing information for that as we prep for the 29th, and that's something we will have to talk about, the, the structure of that meeting and the agenda, but that'll be coming on the, on the 29th. Item number two is the treated and non-treated road salt, I believe there's a full memo in the packet from the Assistant Town Manager as well, but during the winter operation, winter months, the Town of Plainville Roadways Department utilizes both treated and non-treated road salt. Typically, treated road salt includes an organic performance enhancer of de-icing and is most effective in colder conditions, temperatures below 25 degrees Fahrenheit. The Roadways Department has requested to utilize treated road salt for de-icing operations in colder conditions. There is an item under new business regarding the approval of bid 2023-14 for treated road salt to Morton Salt, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, under the CRPC bid number 748 in the amount of $99.67 per ton. The non, excuse me, non-treated road salt is simply rock salt without any organic performance enhancers for de-icing, is most effective in relatively warm conditions, temperatures above approximately 25 degrees Fahrenheit. There is an item under new business as well regarding the approval of bid 2023-15 non-treated road salt to Morton Salt, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, under state contract number 20PSX0085 in the amount of $67.94 per ton. So I just want to, you know, just add a little bit there, obviously, the, the department does its best to gauge conditions and, you know, treat this road conditions appropriately using both the treated and non-treated, and it's important operation, part of the operations as we go into the winter months, we certainly stock up as much as we can ahead of the season, but this is additional to, to, again, refill where we left off from last season. Leaf collection is the next item, and I do have a very, a very timely update as of this afternoon, so let me report, because I had said in my, in my notes that we had started on October 25, and obviously we'll continue to run through December 2, weather permitting, but let me tell you what has transpired, according to Mike Ferrara at Roadways, that they have collected 296 truckloads of leaves. They have finished two full rounds around town and are starting round three tomorrow morning. At this time last year, with most of the leaves that had fallen early, if you recall, they had collected 314 truckloads. So leaf pickup is still consistent with the average of 18 to 20 truckloads coming in each day that they collect. They have two full-time leaf crews out each day, 10 hours a day, six days a week, with five members on each crew. Weekends, they have additional assistance from the building and grounds crew as well as water pollution control. They've had a few breakdowns, three minor breakdowns, two were leaf machine breakdowns, one was a 10-wheeler dump truck with a significant... One was a 10-wheeler dump truck with a significant transmission leak, and that's been sent out for repair. One leaf machine has been repaired and is back in service, and the other one will be back in service later this week. They have lost two days of collection due to heavy rain events, with the potential for another washout Wednesday. And they are still on target to complete leaf collection by December 2nd. So they are out there, and they are busy, and they are getting it done. So that's the updated report on leaf collection. Item number three, I'm sorry, item number four is White Oak Redevelopment Project Update. Remediation environmental cleanup is underway on the interior of the building to remove hazardous building material. Remediation is being done by Enviro Consultants and Recyclers, Inc., and is expected to be completed by the end of November. Topographic analysis of the contaminated soil, mainly in the back of the property, behind the building, was performed. The study will result in identifying a well-defined area of contamination, which we use to write bid specifications for the cleanup process. There will be an opportunity to submit a second application for cleanup funds to Connecticut Deep, if necessary, to cover any overruns, which is referred to what they call a CAPR grant in terms of the environmental. So they'll be continuing to work on that project. Item five is landfill closure update, and I just want to point out that I had promised pictures, and I did not attach those, so that's why you have colored photos. Those are the landfill closure progress photos, if you take a look at those. But the landfill closure project is making good progress and is expected to conclude by the end of December this year, weather permitting. November's report from our consultant, LEA, on the tracking of materials indicates that 236,630 tons of material have been approved, and 161,526 tons have been received at the site. LEA has confirmed, Connecticut Deep has given approval for the reuse of existing material on-site for cover material necessary to undertake the capping. With this approval, LEA has finished with the first phase of the southern portion of the site, included in some of the photos. The town can now relocate its stockpile of materials to the southeast portion of the site. And again, I referenced pictures that you now have. So that is underway and is moving, and hopefully, weather permitting, we will hit that target for December. Item number six is the Honor Heights Sewer Project Update. The project is essentially complete with the exception of a few punch list items. What remains is a discussion on setting the final assessment and the timing of connections to the system and timeline for public hearing. A special meeting is scheduled for next Monday, November 27, and the following items will be discussed: the determination of the final assessment, determination of whether a payment plan will be offered for property owners, determination on the length of payment plan and interest rate, and outstanding balances, determination when or if residents will require to connect with public sanitary sewers, and of course, the timeline for the public hearing, and I'm sure many other questions related to that, but that will take place next Monday on the 27th. Item number seven is the Aquarian Water Softening Upgrade. Aquarian is working through their punch lists from the initial startup and making progress, and this is the Woodford site. Operator training was completed last week, as planned, and they have a few outstanding issues to address prior to going into service related to level controls in one of the tanks, correction of the sewer connection, and a few other items. And right now, they are looking to start up next week after Thanksgiving. They are coordinating with Water Pollution Control on that sewer connection, and they anticipated they were going to have those parts last week. They probably won't be delivered from a recent email that I saw until later, or this week or next, so that has delayed it a little bit. But they're still thinking by the end of November to get that done. And that is the, obviously, the softening upgrade in terms of reducing the hard water.
All right. Let me just, any questions or comments up till now with the Town Manager's report?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that Michael didn't mention this or didn't have it in his report, but you were going to get information on the electronic sign for the front of the town hall. Do we have anything on that?
I don't think we have anything, any new... I'll defer to Andy. He's been working on that and may have something I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't have any new update at this time. What we determined was to move forward with that project because it would exceed the purchasing threshold of $25,000. We'd want to go out to an RFP and likely do some type of design build, which would allow companies to come forward and offer design solutions in addition to supplying the equipment for some type of digital or electronic sign up front. And the purpose, of course, would be to allow, similar to how we have the two plywood boards up front displaying community events, similar procedure would go forward with those who want to use the electronic board. So, yeah, that's on our radar, but that's kind of our plan forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Anyone else?
Chairperson was working on?
Yes.
Yes. Was wondering if we could ask the Town Manager, before we meet next Monday, would it be appropriate if we had additional questions about the Honor Heights project? If we could get those to you so that perhaps, instead of asking them next Monday, that would be information that we would actually have and be able to discuss next Monday?
Sure, absolutely, great idea.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On this meeting that we're going to have with Honor Heights next week, are we looking to have people from Honor Heights come and talk with us? Or is this going to be just us talking?
Well, I think right now, it's just for us to get information and make sure that all seven of us have the same information. They're welcome to be at the meeting. I don't think this is the public hearing, you know, which we do have to schedule, and we promised the Honor Heights neighborhood, we will have a public hearing, and you will have more than probably one opportunity to address the council if you wish to. But next Monday is primarily just to give out information and get us all on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, are we on to financial dashboard?
Yes, we are, yes. So I'm happy to go through the October 31 expenditures report, or the financial dashboard, if you will. And I know that new members seeing this for the first time, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. But what I try to do is, you know, go through these different categories and try to pinpoint any where I think there might be some differences, abnormalities, or trends that are concerning in nature. So I can say upfront, nothing at this point in time, given its expenditures through October 31st. So all in all, it looks well, and I'll just start and work our way through this, and certainly stop me if you have any questions. But overall, the total town expenditure budget has spent through October 31st, $27,358,633. That represents 40%, 40.19%, which is slightly over the two-year average of 38.36%. And essentially, that is due to just general increases and the timing of payments, because most of it is driven by the Board of Education and the amount of revenue that they receive from the state. So nothing alarming there that I'm concerned with. And you see that the general government budget is 48.11% spent, and that two-year average is 47%. So that is essentially in line, just running a percentage slightly above the two-year average. And if you look at the Board of Education, they're nearly 2% or just under 2% increase there. And again, that's just the timing of payments, and this will likely catch up as we get through the season, based on those timing of those payments. Next page is the police, starting with the police dispatch overtime. Expenditures spent through 10/31 is $196,633. The two-year average spend is $186,700. So obviously, it's up nearly $10,000. The two-year difference is $9,933, and that is really due to the lack of staff with respect to members that are out on either some type of leave or workers' comp. But that is getting better. If you look back to last month, that trend was $12,000. It's now, again, as members come back, it's getting better. So we'll continue to track that and look at that, but can only figure that that will get better as members come back, because as you know, we've appointed, and they're up, will be up to full complement once the latest officer gets certified in field training. He was a lateral, has to go through some course training, but that certainly cuts down on having to go to the academy, on the street. It's just about learning the field, passing the field training. Next is Roadways expenditures, and through 10/31, they've expended $12,993. The two-year average is $8,184. So the two-year difference is expenditures above by $4,809. And that is just a reflection of the fact that we had the balloon festival, and that was the difference. But again, we have both the balloon festival and the pumpkin festival. So it's really the balloon festival that's come back after a two-year hiatus that's kind of driven that process. And in Building and Grounds, the same thing. Their spend through 10/31 is $19,095. Their two-year average is $9,838, so nearly $9,000 for them. And, you know, you break it down, the balloon festival is heavier on Building and Grounds than it is Roadways, and Roadways is more so for the pumpkin festival than it is for Building and Grounds. But in either case, both departments are involved in both festivals, and that makes up the difference, but nothing alarming there. Onto solid waste and recycling. Solid waste tonnage through October 31st is 2,100 tons, and the two-year average is 2,078, where we're just slightly above that. But one of the things that internally we're talking about is, it's all about tonnage, right, in terms of the cost. What we're looking at is trying, in the future, trying to get, address two particular issues with textiles in the municipal solid waste, and looking at programs like Green, Pinky's?
Base State.
Base State. There are companies out there we've used effectively that divert and take textiles out to reduce our tonnage. We're looking to reengage one of these firms. And also, food waste would be another great item if we could get that into operations to help defer the tonnage. So maybe it might be, seem like nibbling around the edges, and it is to some degree, but every ton helps us. And so if we can divert that from our municipal waste stream, it's in our best interest to do that. And those, again, one is a short-term play, one is a long-term play. Next is revenue, and revenue through October 31st, we've received 51, total 51%, and our two-year average is 50, so we're just running a little bit higher. And current taxes, 59.23%, the two-year average, 59.05%. So again, nothing that indicates a trend that is concerning in any way. It's just normal. Next page, there's nothing to report there. That is the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and it's the same number as reported from the beginning of the year. We are at 14.65% based on the unassigned fund balance of June 30th, 2024, estimated. It's currently, the unaudited, at 17.41%. But as you know, we've highlighted there the extra fund balance appropriation of 1.4 million. So those numbers are unchanged and will likely remain unchanged, but I like to keep it in there, just as a reminder. Next item is the special funds, special revenue funds, beginning with recreation. And I'm sure that the older members are recognize that I've said the same thing over and over, that these numbers are beginning to go back to the pre-COVID numbers, so they were skewed. So that's why you see here on the expenditure side, spent through October 31st, $129,919, representing a 46% or 46.33% expenditure versus a two-year average of 39.45%. So coming more in line as we, you know, head out of the COVID years. And revenue looks the same with respect to higher revenues because of the programming that we're doing. So revenue received through October 31st, $61,030, and that represents 31.3%. The two-year average is 29.58%. So again, running higher on both ends, reflective of the ramp up after COVID. Robertson Airport, running slightly lower on the operations side, nothing out of the ordinary there. There continue to be a number of projects that are ongoing there that will continue, and there's just a lag, as you see, with the anticipated grant revenue that we have to run through state and federal processes to get those funds. Water Pollution Control Fund, unremarkable there as well. The expenditures are 54%. The two-year average is 55%. The revenue is higher on a two-year, versus the two-year average. The revenue received is 2.28%, the two-year average is 1.53%. So, you know, running above there in terms of the revenue side. So everything will certainly shake out as we get closer to the end of the year, but nothing alarming. And the library fund, the only thing to mention there, I think that Councilwoman Moranti had indicated in terms of her discussion on the endowment, is just the fact that the endowment, or the, I should say, the investment haven't done, the investments haven't done as well as they have in previous years, but that trend looks to be turning around. So that's good. And over the year, fiscal year, we hope that that comes even, comes par. And then there's really nothing, on the last page, Major Projects Report, nothing changed there, hasn't really been much movement on any of those projects. But I think we'll add Whiting Street and Honor Heights in the spring, so in the new year, after January, I think we'll be adding those as they come online. We take a look at tracking those. So that's all they've got in terms of dashboard. I happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments regarding the financial dashboard? All right, time for happenings.
Great, thank you. The Plainville Fire Company will be having a Christmas tree sale at the firehouse starting on Friday, November 24th. It'll be going until Sunday, December 3rd. Trees are going to be $75 each, and it's cash only. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to the fire company or visit their Facebook page for more information, including the hours that they'll be out there selling. I think it's located on the side of the firehouse. From the Public Library, and for all information on the Public Library and library programs, including how to register, you can call the Plainville Public Library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.plainvillect.com/library. They have two performances coming up. One, the Holiday Performance by pianist David Eberle on Thursday, December 7th, at 6:30 PM. And then the Plainville Flute Choir Performance is on Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM. Both events are open to people of all ages, and you can register in advance. And from the Senior Center, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Help for Veterans on Tuesday, November 21st, at 10:00 AM. This is by appointment only, and you can call Jason Coppola, the Veteran Service Officer, at 203-805-6340. This is open to all veterans who live in the 5th Congressional District, and it's for anyone who needs assistance with paperwork or navigating the VA or things like that. Grandparents Raising Grandchildren on Tuesday, November 21st, at 10:30 AM. You can share resources, ideas, and the struggles and joys of, with other people who are raising their grandchildren or other close relatives. The Senior Center Thanksgiving is on Thursday, November 23rd. Doors open... Doors open at 11 a.m., and the meal is served at noon. This is open to the Senior Center members and Plainville residents over 60 who will be spending Thanksgiving this year alone or may not have anywhere to go this season. So you're welcome at the Senior Center. You are asked to please call in advance to reserve a spot. Memory Screening on Tuesday, November 28, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. This is free, but you do have to call for an appointment. Valerie Bartos, the Memory Care Advisor from Arden Courts, will be conducting a memory screening. And a memory screening is a series of questions and tasks designed to gauge memory, language, and thinking skills. The tests are brief, five to 10 minutes. And while the results are not a diagnosis, they, the scoring can indicate if someone needs to follow up with the clinician for further evaluation. There's a lunch and learn session called Sad and Don't Know Why on Thursday, November 30 at 11:30 a.m. This is free, and if you'd like to attend, please register by November 21. This is, yeah, bless you. Seasonal Affective Disorder, commonly known as SAD or sad, is more than just the winter blues. You can join Heather Hitchcock, the Community Education Manager for Bristol Behavioral Health, as she discusses the causes, preventative measures for, signs and symptoms of, and available treatments for SAD. There's a complimentary lunch provided by the Pines of Bristol and the National Healthcare. And finally, tree trimming and carol singing at the Senior Center. This is on Tuesday, December 5 at 2 p.m. To kick off the season, you can go, join the Senior Center for their annual tree decorating, which is in the living room of the Senior Center. There's singing, and there's, their own choral group will be in attendance, and of course, hot chocolate and cookies. If you'd like to attend, you can sign up. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else before we move on? All right, thank you very much for that. We are up to item nine, public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. We do have, the first bell gives you 30 seconds left to talk. The second bell completes the three minutes. And I'm not even going to look, but Mr. Kislik, do you have something to say?
John Kislik, 65 Forest Avenue. Thank you, Chairman Wazorko. Like we talked before, if you're so kind and indulge me if I can get an extra minute tonight?
You know, it's the holiday season. Why not? Let's give them an extra minute tonight, shall we? Go ahead.
I jumped up so fast tonight, too. We have a new council and a new term. So I would like to start this off with the prayer. I'd like to offer a prayer to the town council. Dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the knowledge, wisdom, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen. That's a prayer I said before.
No, that's courtesy of Joey and Edmond, I imagine, right?
I told the council last, last meeting about the silk fabric that was blocking drains. I got a letter back from the town saying that they would remove the silk when the project was done. Well, I knew that was wrong. The project was done, the roads had been repaved, grass on the lawns that was dug up had been replanted. I even cut the grass at Marilyn's house three times. So I contacted supervisor. He was really surprised and I think embarrassed that they didn't do it. I think I contacted him on Monday about 4 o'clock. By Wednesday, the silk fabric was removed on all the streets, Milford Street, Kent Street, Woodland Street. So I wanted to let the council know that. Now.
Thank you for following up on that.
I took care of it. Now, in the name of transparency.
The checks in the mail, John.
In the name of transparency and respect for the town council, because I gave Chairman Wazorko a packet of some freedom of information. I filed one on the balloon festival. And it comes down to, I want the people to know what is costing the taxpayers for this. So building and grounds, roadways, and the police, and $3,000 for half of an insurance policy, it costs $34,500 for the taxpayers. That doesn't include any time that the town manager or his office spent or our financial department. So you're talking probably close to $40,000. I remember I said 20, I was way off. But, you know, if you're going to do this, I'd like the public to know. Now, I have another freedom of information tonight. I really like these because, Councilman Wazorko, you might remember, had somebody from the state come and speak to us. I guess it was Tom Hennick, gave us all the information on the types of meetings, the do's and don'ts, and Freedom of Information Act. And I like it because if you get a resistance for getting your forms filled out, the state will provide attorneys for you, which is great. So anyway, this other one I have, the council, the last council approved the First Amendment for the town manager. And what I would like to get is, I would like a copy of that First Amendment and a request in all the changes that include monetary amounts that result in salary changes and in benefits and conditions. And I'd like to get the comments. You used to have a rating thing. When Robert Lee was here, you rated him, you know, one to five, all different topics. I'd like to find out how you rated him and if you had a schedule to provide that for me. Now, I don't want the town manager to think that I'm treating him special because, as you know, I had Robert Lee's contract, all a collection of his amendments. So it's something that I do, it's something I like to know. If the rest of the people in the town don't care, I do. But this is something you should be proud of your town manager and what you're giving him. You know, a lot of towns put it in a paper, how you rated him, if you gave him an increase in salary. That's all I have, and I really appreciate you giving me the extra time. That is something special that I never could get in the last town council, and I really appreciate it.
Just remember that the first time we disagree at this new council.
I know that's going to happen, but we can still agree to disagree. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Anyone else? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new town council, wish you well. And also, I'd like to give a welcome to our new town attorney. Welcome to Plainville. Not a little more serious note, it's just a curiosity thing. I noticed this, the first bullet, was the middle school renovation project. Has that, the project been approved? The middle school project, has that been approved?
No, not, not, I think.
That's just a review.
By the way, if, I'm understanding what you're saying. What you think approved means we have not done that yet. You know, we have to make some decisions, and it's actually the voters are going to get to decide ultimately if we go to referendum.
All right.
So ultimately, the approval is going to be by the voters at a referendum.
In essence, this is step one.
Yeah, we're maybe step two of step 20, but yes.
But this isn't the rubber stamp.
We're not rubber stamping anything, yes.
Next question, quick one, November 29 is the meeting at the high school?
Yes.
That's correct, on this subject. And what time would that be, starting time?
Oh. 7 o'clock.
Seven bills, okay. Oh, and that will also be posted on the internet in case I fall asleep.
We'll make sure, but yes, it should be, but we'll double check.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else? All right. Hearing no one, we will close public comments. Item 10, old business. We have no old business to take care of tonight, so we can move right to item 11, new business. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to award bid number 2023-14, treated road salt under Capital Region Purchasing, council bid number 748 to Morton Salt, Inc., Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $99.67 per ton.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Comment from the town manager.
It's supposed to be 24? Yeah, yeah, both of them.
You just read.
I just want to, yeah, for the record correct, the, the motion, there's a misprint. Both of those items should be bid 2024, not 2023.
Oh.
Sorry, redo it.
No, I think we can just acknowledge that it's 2024.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Hurley.
I'd like the motion to award bid number 2024-15, non-treated road salt under state contract number 20PSX0085 to Morton Salt Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $67.94 per ton.
All right, the motion.
Second.
Second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the refunds? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That concludes new business. Item 12, any other discussions of interest tonight?
Mr. Chair, I have one, one item I just wanted to mention. If you recall, the last term, we had an intern here that talked about, Matt, talking about social media and made a presentation and so forth. And we had kind of alluded to the fact that we wanted to do a survey to look at branding and, you know, a slogan and a logo. And so we just, I just want to mention that, that potentially we could have that for a discussion at the December 4 meeting. And it would be around potentially creating a Discover Plainville Steering Committee, if you will, and defer to Andy to put a little bit more background behind that. But we should have that ready for December 4.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So this kind of builds off of the presentation that we had earlier, which probably next meeting we could talk a little bit more about. But the essence of it was how to leverage, you know, social media and our resources to help drive economic development in town. So in doing so, the Discover Plainville Steering Committee that we're kind of planning would be dedicated to kind of fostering this idea of community engagement, economic development. And the task would be to spearhead the creation of kind of like this new town slogan and a logo that could be used to attract businesses to the community. And we're looking to partner with our Economic Development Coordinator, Cal, who's here, in addition to members of the town council and business members and community members. So we'll have more information on that. But the goal, again, would be for us to have some of those outcomes in addition to recommendations as to other things the town can do to kind of drive economic development. There's a lot of really exciting stuff happening in town with the trail, with White Oak. And I think we want to leverage that momentum as we move forward and try to get ahead of it so that as these projects come to fruition, we already have this infrastructure to continue to attract businesses to our town.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll just, before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I just want to, on behalf of the council and the town staff, just wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully, you get a day or two to slow down and enjoy friends and family. And, you know, we'll look forward to seeing everyone on December 4, which is our next regular meeting. We do have tonight a matter for executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and it's, just so we're clear, it's for land acquisition negotiations.
And, yeah, if you wouldn't mind in the motion to, I don't know if we need, it's had been a while for executive session, but to include. Yeah, right, so myself, town manager, assistant town manager, town attorney, but we'd also like to include Mark DeVoe and Cal Halberger as two staff members as well.
Okay. All right. All right, and we don't anticipate coming back for any motions after executive session?
No.
All right, so we are all set. We're going to go into executive session. We don't anticipate any votes after executive session. So thank you for being here tonight, and we'll take a few minutes and we'll meet in the back room. Thank you, everyone.
We voted on it today.
We should technically vote on it, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Deb. Have a good night.